Good evening. And welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting, March meeting. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Trustee Leonard. Please stand.
Please raise your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. We are blessed with a new library trustee, Leslie Liddell, and I'll let her take a few moments and tell you about herself.
Thank you very much. My name is Leslie, and I have been a community member for 34 years and a teacher for 36 years. And I live in Corona and teach in Corona, and I love libraries and I love books, so that is what brought me here.
Thank you. We are glad you found your way here.
Thank you.
We have approval of the Library Board of Trustees' meeting minutes of February 25, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the meeting minutes from February 25, 2025.
I second it.
A motion was made by Trustee Leonard and seconded by Trustee Heineman. Ms. Backus, will you please take a vote? Mine didn't come through. Did it come through? Did it go through, Ms. Backus? Okay. I don't know what I'm looking at here. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous Library Board of Trustees items. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the Library Board of Trustees, a trustee or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Boards, graphs, stats, calendar, and flyers? Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the board graphs, stats, calendar, and flyers.
I second it.
A motion was made by Trustee Heineman and seconded by Trustee Towler Hayes. Ms. Backus, will you please take a vote? Okay. All right, it has been approved. Persons wishing to address the Library Board of Trustees on items listed on the agenda are requested to identify themselves and state the matter on which they wish to comment. No action will be taken on matters not listed on the agenda. The Library Board of Trustees would appreciate your cooperation in keeping your comments brief. Ms. Backus, are there any speaker cards from the public?
No speaker cards from the public.
Are there any written comments from the public?
No written comments from the public.
Okay, moving right along. Administrative reports. The reports will be introduced by Community Services Director Donna Finch, and the report will be given by Library Manager Danielle Whittington.
Thank you, Chair Kennerly, and good evening, trustees. So I'm excited to introduce our library report for the month of March, and we have several exciting updates that Ms. Whittington is going to be sharing. And just to provide a brief update of what those updates are going to be, one of the things that we wanted to announce is our Culture City training. I know we mentioned, I believe, at the last meeting that the entire library team underwent some training at their All Staff Day for Culture City to be a sensory-inclusive facility. I don't want to take all the announcement away from Danielle, but we received some exciting signage and bags that are going to help us with the rollout of that program, and she's going to tell us a little bit more about that during the report. We're also gearing up for National Library Week, and our library team has a week full of plans, both on the programming and event side for the library that Ms. Whittington is going to talk more about. We are also partnering with One Legacy to do an informational booth display regarding organ donation at the library. That's going to be occurring in the next few weeks, so she will announce that as well. And then we have our usual announcement of upcoming events for the month of April. In addition to National Library Week, there are also several other activities that are going to be going on at the library that we're happy to share about. And then, of course, our top titles, fiction, nonfiction, and ebooks for the month of February, we're going to share out on that. And then, one of the new things, I think we put it on our last report, and you're going to start to see it coming up on more of our reports, is an update on incidents at the library. So we're going to be reporting out on the incidents that occurred during the month of February and March. Luckily, it was not heavy on the incidents this month, but we're, you know, happy to be able to share that with the trustees and answer any questions that you have regarding that. And then wrapping up the report will be an update on some upcoming items, both within the library and just citywide events and activities that are occurring. So I will go ahead and turn it over to our library manager, Ms. Danielle Whittington, to provide the full report.
Thank you, Director Finch, and good evening, Madam Chair and trustees. So we have officially received our signage and sensory bags. So signage essentially shows everybody that comes into the library what is designated as a quiet zone, what's a headphone zone, where you can go to check out these bags. So in each bag, there's a couple of fidget toys, there are sensory glasses that help darken if it's just a little bit too bright. There's like a feelings card that kind of helps people who may be nonverbal express how they're feeling at the moment, if they're stressed, if they're anxious, if they're happy, just so that they can communicate with us. And there are also noise-dampening headphones. So those bags are available at the children's desk and also the adult desk. Also, at the adult desk, we have, excuse me, at the adult desk, we have our weighted lap pad, and that actually seems to also be interested, the children's area seems to also be interested in that, so we may be acquiring another one for the children's area. We actually had somebody check out one of these bags today, so it was really nice to be able to have somebody come in and check them out and use them as they need to. So quiet areas, we've designated that as the Heritage Room. It should already be a quiet area because it's for researchers and those that are trying to be studious. The headphone areas, we've designated the community room and the children's room as the headphone area. So that's the areas in the library that just are a little bit more loud than normal, and you may want to have some headphones or something else that will help dampen the noise that are in there. So they are available for checkout at any of the reference desks, and we do wipe them down between each use. So for National Library Week, which starts next week, we invite all of you that are here and that are watching at home to come and discover some Decades of Discovery for the National Library Week. On Monday, we are having a movie marathon, and so our staff have picked movies pretty much from each decade. So it's just going to go through every decade until we close, essentially. So stop by. I think we'll also have some snacks at that time. On Tuesday, we're having a family sock hop, so bring your poodle skirts and come join us and have a little dance. It's all fun. Also, on Wednesday, we're going to have a tie dye maker activity for families, and so you can come and learn how to make your own tie dye and be able to take that home. On Thursday, which is going to be my favorite day, it's 80's Storytime, so wear your sideways piggytails and, I don't know, dress up as Strawberry Shortcake, I don't know. But we encourage people to come out and dress up during this decade of Discovery Week. And then, lastly, we will have a Millennial Prom that's for adults on Friday. So, and also, all week, we are going to have an exhibit in the Heritage Room of technology and other things throughout the decades from the library. So we encourage everybody to come out and join us during that time. So One Legacy, we had a presentation back in November about One Legacy, and that is for organ and tissue donation. One Legacy ambassadors are going to be at the library from the time we open until the time we close on March 31st, so if you have any questions about what it is to donate your tissues or organs, we will have people there to be able to answer any of those questions. Rita Jackson is our local ambassador, and her daughter, when she passed, was an organ donator. So we want to make sure that we give them the space, since it seemed that the trustees were really open to having some more information about One Legacy be available in the library. And then, also throughout the month of April, since it is Organ Donor Month, we will have a display up for the entire month of April. So as I mentioned previously, we're having a family sock hop on the first from 2:00 to 4:00. We have a teen escape room on the third from 5:30 to 7:00. Millennial Prom Night, Bring Your Flip Phones, on April 4th. And then, we also have Sweet and Sour Science, and you'll be, teens are going to be able to learn how to make purple lemonade. So these are some of the fun upcoming events that are happening at the library. So these are the top titles for fiction in the month of February. Pokemon's back on top, as always, and My Hero Academia is very close, a very close second. And then, for nonfiction, Primary Phonics is always at the top for that, just seems to be a current and very popular checkout for nonfiction users. And then, I don't have ebooks because those stats were not coming up for me, so I will make sure that next month I will have ebook stats for both February and March. This is our calendar of events for April. As you see, there are some days where our Homework Center is going to be closed, particularly through the first week of April, because that also coincides with spring break for CNUSD. So that's going to be closed, as well as the Math Tutor. Again, we want people to come out to read to a dog. It's just such a blast to see little kids go in there and in the High Desert Room and read to dogs, and they're always so enthusiastic, especially Titus, he's fun. And then, also, National Library Week, we're really trying to get many, many people to come out for our National Library Week next week. So thankfully, it was a somewhat quiet month. I didn't have to suspend anybody, which is always a nice thing. We did have one issue with drugs and drug paraphernalia. It was a small incident, but that's, I like that. No incident reports, and we did have a library materials consideration. We'd had a parent come in and was concerned with Sarah J. Maas's series. But when I asked the librarians and we went through the publisher and we did our homework, we went through, we saw that the particular series that she was talking about was geared toward teens. The issue was that she thought that it was maybe too, because apparently, maybe they read also the adult ones, because she reads, she writes for both. And so, wanted the ones that were in the teens moved over to adult, but after conferring with my librarians, we figured that moving the teen-centered series to the adult would lead them to the adult ones sooner than anticipated. So we decided that we were going to continue to keep the teen series in the teen area, but we also, I also did, when I replied to her, sent the library collection development policy that also outlines that we don't get involved. We don't, we want to support the parent-child relationship when it comes to access in reading materials, and we never want to interfere with that. So we decided to just keep that series in the teen area. So some upcoming items, National Library Week, I know you're tired of me saying that, but don't worry, next month, we're going to have a presentation on National Library Week. We also have, the Community Services Department has Guided Hikes, so that's happening on the 12th. Be sure to come out to the Music and Arts Festival, that's going to be really fun, at the Historic Civic Center from 1:00 to 8:00. And then, also, on April 22nd, we'll be meeting again. We're going to do the National Library Week recap, and then I'll also have the Mayor's Youth Council here to give a report. Any questions?
Yes. I just want to make a comment. I'm really glad to see that you're including a page for the library incident updates, because sometimes if someone asks us about something, it's good to know, you know, what has happened at the library, because someone may see something and, you know, not get it correct. So I'm glad to have that part. That's good. Thank you so much.
How many of the Culture City kits do you guys have?
So we have a total of five. We have four at the children's desk and one at the adult desk, but if we need more at either desk, we can borrow.
Did you get any feedback on the person who checked it out?
They seem to have, I hadn't, I had to leave early for a meeting, but it did seem like they were having a really good time with it, and we're still having a good time as I was leaving.
Oh, okay. And then, also, on April 26th, the Friends are having their Historical Author Brunch event, and they still have 30 tickets left.
That's right. Keep us informed. Trustee Leonard, do you have any comments? Trustee Liddell, do you have any comments?
I do have a question. The movie marathon, is there a place where families can find the times and the videos that are going to be shown throughout the day?
So because of our agreement with the video licensing, we can't say what we're doing, but we do have all of that in our Decades of Discovery. I think there's a list of a general understanding of what the movie is, and then they have the times in there as well. So that information should be in our Decades of Discovery handout.
Ms. Whittington, I had a question about the tie dye activity. I didn't see a time on that. That's on the National Library Week? Wednesday?
That would be 3:00 to 5:00.
3:00 to 5:00?
3:00 to 5:00.
Okay, looks like a lot of interesting things are coming up. Are there any more comments? Any comments from you all out there? Okay, well, we're going to move on to the Heritage Room policy. The report will be introduced by Community Services Director Donna Finch, and the report will be given by Library Manager Danielle Whittington.
Thank you, Chair Kennerly. So as you know, we reopened our lovely Heritage Room back in October with a new expanded footprint and layout, and we've been able to move all of the collection, both catalogued and uncatalogued, back up to the Heritage Room. And it's just, it's been a great success. We're very happy with the response that we're getting and all of the new visitors that are being introduced to our local history. But one of the things that we want to make sure we do have in place is a policy on how to properly utilize the Heritage Room, how we manage the collection, which items are to be handled sensitively versus others that are just accessible to the public. So our team has done a great job putting together a policy on how to oversee the management of the Heritage Room and then additional opportunities for volunteers that may exist. And our goal is to present it to the trustees this evening, and if you approve, to have the trustees recommend it to the city council, and it will be going to the council following your recommendation. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Whittington to present the details on the policy.
Wonderful. Okay, so the ask is that the trustees review, provide feedback, and then recommend approval of this Heritage Room policy. So the Heritage Room reopened in October, and we've been assessing usage and the collections themselves to create a policy that's going to allow the collections to have a longer shelf life and to have the preservation and conservation first and foremost with the items that we have up there. So the policy itself discusses the proper use of the room, the collection management, our acquisitions, and then volunteering and internships and other opportunities in that realm. And then, for the guidelines of compiling all of this information together, I've gone through and looked at best practices and guidelines of local history rooms, as well as archives and repositories. And then, after I was done with that, I sent it out to archivists at the University Special Collections and Archives at Cal State Fullerton, the Robert E. Ellingwood Model Colony History Room at Ontario City Library, and then, actually, earlier this week, the Nixon Library and Museum. So they were the three that have reviewed the policy. Okay, so the Heritage Room policy goes over five main items, so acquisitions and deaccessioning. So for the Heritage Room, we are going to acquire material that's relating to the history of Corona and the surrounding area. So if you have something really neat, but it's for the city of San Bernardino, we're going to direct people to San Bernardino to donate those items. We are operating within the limits of our storage space and then processing times, because we want to be considerate to our staff, interns, and volunteers that are working up in the Heritage Room. And then, the removal of the items, or we're going to follow guidelines that follow, like, current archival standards. So what we will do is, we will consider an item for removal, we will reach out to the families that had originally owned said item, and then, if that, if they don't want it, which is very rare, we will ask other repositories and other local history rooms if they would like the item and donate it there, so that it is precious to somebody, but we currently don't have the space for it. Using the collection in the room, we have, in the policy, we have an overview of how to use the items. We want to make sure people are using the items at the table, using only one folder at a time, so that we're not mixing collections together. We're asking that bad food and water are underneath the table. We go through what's in the memory lab, which currently, we have a scanner, we have a microfilm scanner, we have a reel-to-reel scanner, and a VHS digitizer, so all of that is up there for the public to use, and they can also use it with the collections as well. And fragile items are handled by staff only, and number three goes into what those fragile collections are. The policy also goes into copyright law and code of conduct. We want to make sure that people are still, know that the code of conduct is in effect at all times, and then also that they need to do their due diligence in making sure they're not breaking copyright law in scanning and/or using items that they're using in the Heritage Room. Fragile collections, we've designated as glass negatives, newspaper microfilm, film collections, artifacts, oversized photos, panoramic photos, and maps. And so, with these fragile collections, it is imperative that staff assist the patron in using these items, and then, once complete, they need to let the staff know that they're done, so that we can retrieve it and place it where it needs to go. We also have a detailed list of items that are accepted, so currently, we have a very granular list of items that we're currently accepting in the printed and published material section, manuscripts and archival material, audiovisual material, and then also, if you have something that is digital-born or electronic, we would love to have that as well. And then, lastly, volunteering and internships, we do have an internship opportunity available to library and information science majors. We currently have an intern already working in the Heritage Room this semester. We have one lined up for fall semester as well, actually, two, excuse me. And then, also, with volunteering, we have those opportunities for people to come in and volunteer to do scanning, to potentially be a docent, and those are those, all of those opportunities for volunteering. I also wanted to add that the Nixon Library and Museum archivist suggested that there be an age limit for patrons, so if you are a certain age and below, you need to have your parents up there. So that was one. And then, not using ink pens while you're up there. I've had incidences where, not here, but at other institutions, where people will have an ink pen, and then it'll bleed through a document, and then, we don't know what that word says anymore. No food or drinks on the table and no gum at all. And also, to keep people's hands clean while they're using the material, so just so that we're not damaging the material. So that could be, like, food, if you have ink on your hands, or toner, tobacco, saliva, sanitizer, lotion, we may ask you to go and wash your hands so that you can use some of the items. And then, also, the last suggestion was to beef up the copyright. So just have people, make sure that people do their due diligence and making sure that they are within copyright. So a recap, we're accepting items, and we're really, we're looking We have a reel-to-reel scanner and a VHS digitizer. So all of that is up there for the public to use. And they can also use it with the collections as well. And fragile items are handled by staff only. And number three goes into what those fragile collections are. The policy also goes into copyright law, copyright law and code of conduct. We want to make sure that people are still in, you are, know that the code of conduct is in effect at all times. And then also that they need to do their due diligence in making sure they're not breaking copyright law in scanning and/or using items that they're using in the Heritage Room. Fragile collections, we've designated as glass negatives, newspaper microfilm, film collections, artifacts, oversized photos, panoramic photos, and maps. And so with these fragile collections, it is imperative that staff assist the patron in using these items. And then once complete, they need to let the staff know that they're done so that we can retrieve it and place it where it needs to go. We also have a detailed list of items that are accepted. So currently, we have a very granular list of items that we're currently accepting in the printed and published material section, manuscripts and archival material, audiovisual material. And then also, if you have something that is digital born or electronic, we would love to have that as well. And then lastly, volunteering and internships. We do have an internship opportunity available to library and information science majors. We currently have an intern already working in the Heritage Room this semester. We have one lined up for fall semester as well, actually two, excuse me. And then also with volunteering, we have those opportunities for people to come in and volunteer to do scanning, to potentially be a docent. And those are those, all of those opportunities for volunteering. I also wanted to add that the Nixon Library and Museum archivist suggested that there be an age limit for patrons. So if you are a certain age and below, you need to have your parents up there. So that was one. And then not using ink pens while you're up there. I've had incidences where, not here, but at other institutions, where people will have an ink pen and then it'll bleed through a document. And then we don't know what that word says anymore. No food or drinks on the table and no gum at all. And also to keep people's hands clean while they're using the materials. So just so that we're not damaging the material. So that could be like food, if you have ink on your hands or toner, tobacco, saliva, sanitizer, lotion. We may ask you to go and wash your hands so that you can use some of the items. And then also, the last suggestion was to beef up the copyright. So just have people, make sure that people do their due diligence and making sure that they are within copyright. So a recap, we're accepting items and we're really, we're looking for things, especially for cultural life and also the history of Corona and the surrounding areas. We want to remind people that the code of conduct is in effect while you are in the Heritage Room. Just because it's upstairs doesn't mean it's exempt. The Heritage Room has fragile items. And we want to make sure that staff are the ones that are handling those just so that we're not breaking or tearing items. And then we're always welcome to look for volunteers and accept interns to help with certain projects that we have in the Heritage Room. Any questions or feedback or dot, dot, dot you may have?
Ms. Backus, are there any speaker cards from the public?
No speaker cards from the public.
Are there any written comments from the public?
No written comments from the public.
Are there any comments? Yes. Trustee Heineman?
Yeah, I wanted to just make a comment. Well, it really isn't about the policy. I think the policy sounds very good and it covers everything. Can you give us an idea of the amount of visits to the Heritage Room so far?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm, there's about 30 a month, roundabouts. Sometimes we'll have tours that go in the room, especially with, last month, we had the Girl Scouts, like a local Girl Scout group, go up there and learn about local history as a part of their badge. So we're consistently having a growing number of people interested in the Heritage Room. Sometimes they'll just go up there just to look at the exhibit and leave. Or sometimes they'll come up there and do research on their elementary school.
Is there a special way you're promoting the Heritage Room and its uses?
Yes, so we, on every Thursday, we have a Throwback Thursday post on our social media. So we have, we ask the staff that are working up there to find something really neat and cool so that we can post and generate some interest in the room. We're also planning on a, an exhibit schedule so that we can change out the exhibits and make them more interesting and engaging. And then also, we have events that we're planning for the room as well.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you planning on having the train come back, the train?
You were like the third person that's asked us. Yes, I think I need to reach out to Heritage Park. I think they were the ones that, that maybe have done that, but. Henri? Okay. And potentially have a train exhibit up there as well.
And Manager Whittington, I was wondering when you were referring to handling the fragile collections, are there gloves or something that?
Yes, yes, you will need to wear gloves when handling fragile items.
So they're provided there?
Yes, we have, we have gloves that are up there.
Okay.
Danielle, a couple of quick questions. One, is this the type of policy that would also include the policies and procedures related to loaning items out to other organizations such as Heritage Park?
I think we have a separate policy for that.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's not in this one in particular.
Okay, and then I guess this is related, but the lighting up there, is that also the type of lighting that helps prevent the breakdown of materials over time?
So I believe that's UV light. So it should, it's a lot better than normal fluorescent light. We have these environmental sensors that are in the four collection areas of our library. And they measure light, humidity, temperature. So I have one in there that's set for a specific lumen or lux. And if it goes over that, it sends me an email and lets me know that, hey, it's too bright up there. Anytime we have an item that is a little too like brittle to be displayed for a long period of time, we're going to pull that item probably sooner than we would the entire, the rest of the exhibit because that needs to go back into a dark storage.
And on the, sorry, the last one, I promise. On the policy, you mentioned possibly having children, certain age groups, make sure that an adult or guardian is with them. Do you happen to know about what age you would, you would start requiring a, or stop requiring an adult?
My, my initial like gut reaction was 11 and younger need to have an adult. But again, this is up for feedback and discussion. If you believe that 11-year-olds are responsible enough to not go up there and eat and pull books off shelves, and then I can put pen. So it's, it's up to discussion. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we're going to move on. We have a report will be introduced by?
Chair Kennerly, my apologies, but I believe this item does require a vote.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Backus, will you please take a vote?
I move that we accept the board, or the WD Addison Heritage Room policy as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, it has been moved by trustee Leonard and seconded by trustee Heineman that we accept the report presented regarding the Heritage Room. Now, let me take a vote. It just says vote in progress?
Chair Kennerly?
I, I agree.
Trustee Heineman?
I vote yes, I agree.
And trustee Liddell?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, it has been moved, seconded and voted on. Okay, we're going to move on. We have a report by Community Services Donna Finch. And then a report given by Librarian Two, Jennifer Marla.
Thank you, Chair. So this report is going to be going over our very robust electronic collection. We are very fortunate that we have access to millions, literally, of books electronically for our patrons and our residents. And Ms. Marla is going to provide a report on the usage of our e-collection as well as a new platform that we are launching, Aspen Discovery. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Marla so she can provide the report to the trustees.
Hello? So our collection has really grown in the last couple of years. Our total collection, and this includes eBooks and physical items. We have included these because federal and state agencies are now combining them when they make recommendations and collect statistical data. Our total library collection size is 2.4 million titles. 3% of the collection is made up of physical material. That's about 82,000 items. Our 97% is our eBook collection. That's over 2.3 million titles. It comes out to about 15 items per resident when you look at that. We have four major platforms that we use to deliver the e-media or e-collections to the public, the smallest of which is Canopy. It's about 1% of the e-collection. There are about 34,000 titles. Canopy is a pay-per-use model. So even if you don't finish the title that you've downloaded or streamed, it counts, we're charged for that. That's the pay-per-use model. Canopy includes children's titles and adult film, TV, and books adapted for the public. Palace Project is our next collection. It is, it has about 182,000 titles. This is a consortium of California libraries. And we've pooled our titles so that they can be utilized by everyone in California with a library card. We've purchased material and, as well as the state library and various libraries all, all across the state. These materials are single use. So it's like a traditional book. If you check something out, it's not available to another patron. Cloud Library, Cloud Library is our oldest e-collection platform. And it includes eBooks, audiobooks, and magazines. It makes up about 12% of the overall e-collection. This is where you're going to find popular titles and new releases, as well as some classics. And it follows a traditional borrowing model with single use. It also, we're part of a consortium called CloudLink through this. And it's about, it's a, probably a good 20 or 30 libraries within the state of California are all part of this consortium. And we all share our eBooks. And then we've got Hoopla, which is kind of a juggernaut. That's where we've got our 1.8 million titles. eBooks, audiobooks, mag, I'm sorry, not magazines, but comics, movies, series are all available. Hoopla is a pay-per-use model, but it's also simultaneous. So you can have 40 people all watching the same show, listening to the same audiobook, which is very nice. Right now, with these four platforms, we've been able to increase our collection, audiobook, or sorry, or e-collection by 20%. This helps us meet one of our objectives for the strategic plan. And we're actually meeting it in advance. It was something we were supposed to have done by the end of the fiscal year '27. But that's to increase access to material and to explore joining consortiums. So we've now joined two consortiums to increase access to material. Usage has grown by 130% over the last year. 60% of that is Hoopla. People like the simultaneous use, the broad range of titles. There's independent titles as well as your bestsellers. Hoopla does bring in material, at least they wait one year before new material is added. So the latest Danielle Steele, James Patterson, you won't find that until the following year, the year after it's originally released. But that's how they keep the prices, the way they, they have everything structured. We have, last year, there were 71,000 borrows across all four platforms. And this accounted for 20% of the library circulation. And the budget for everything was about $116,000. We're getting ready in April, on the 21st, to launch Aspen Discovery. This is going to replace our library catalog. Aspen Discovery brings together a lot of our resources. You'll be able to find our e-collections there. You'll be able to check out, the e-collections place holds check due dates all within Aspen. You won't have to, to switch from one app to another if you happen upon a title as you're doing a search. We are also going, this is going to incorporate our local history collection. So if you did a search for citrus labels or citrus, it will pull up the citrus label collection in the Heritage Room. You'll be able to see it. This is also going to include our online resources. So if you're doing research, and you type in genealogy into the library catalog, it's going to let you know that we have access to ancestry.com and how to do, how to access it. It also comes with an app called AspenLita. Including AspenLita, this app allows us to meet another strategic plan objective. We will have not just an app that eases access to the electronic collection, but to the book collection. But it also will provide patrons with an electronic library card. So there will actually be a bar, a scannable barcode that they can use if they left their car, their library card at home or in the car and they don't want to juggle everything to go get it. They can just open up their phone and scan their card to borrow material. Within this app, we will also have access to our room reservation software. So they'll be able to immediately go in and book a study room if they wanted to do that. It'll all be incorporated into the application. Any questions?
You don't have, so now I have, I currently have a Cloud Library app and I have a Hoopla app. So now I only need the AspenLita app.
You will still need the other apps to read the material.
Oh, okay.
But if you are doing a search in the catalog for, again, the latest Nora Roberts, for example, it will tell you that there's a copy in Palace and a copy available in Cloud Library. And it gives you the option to check it out immediately. You don't have to exit the app and open up another one and get logged in. You're able to do all of that circulation type of. All of it'll be done in Aspen, if you choose.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Ms. Backus, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Ayesha?
No speaker cards from the public.
I have to go by this thing first.
I just have a question.
I know, I have to. Pardon me?
No speaker cards from the public.
Okay, are there any written comments from the public?
No written comments from the public.
Okay, okay, trustee Heineman?
I just wanted to ask, I see on there that it says events. So is that all the different events, the story hours and everything? That would be on there for people to see?
Yes, the calendar will be there as well. And when we go live on the 21st, it won't be ready quite yet. There's still some implementation steps that need to be taken. But we will be integrating the calendar. So if you were searching that catalog or the app and you typed in STEM, and we had a program going on in the Maker Exchange, it would tell you that there is a STEM program going on in Maker and tell you what day and time it is.
You know, the, the Friends of the library have community events, like they're having the Easter Bunny there for family photos. Would it be possible that they could get events like that on that? Or is it just purely for library, you know, the city library events?
I think with the initial launch of this program, we're going to just focus solely on library. And then if we see an increased usage of that, that portion of the platform, then we can potentially discuss integrating it with other liaison groups.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments?
So on Hoopla, I guess, I, I didn't realize that I had like Hoopla and Canopy, movies and TV series. Is there a way to partition out how many people are utilizing it for that rather than for reading? And how much we're spending on that component of it instead of?
I don't have the numbers in front of me right now. But yes, we can take a look at that. With Hoopla, audiobooks are what drive. With Hoopla, audiobooks are what drive the bulk of the circulation, audiobooks and eBooks. But we can take a look at that.
Okay. And then the $116,000 budget, is that just what is budgeted from the light, the city's library budget? Or is it including outside contributions?
That's entirely library budget.
Thank you so much, sorry.
I have a question. How long or how easy is it going to be for patrons to have the library card moved over to their phone? Do they have to actually come into the library?
No, it's as soon as you download the app and log in with your library card.
Perfect.
Actually, you could play with it now. The catalogs don't, we're still working on it, but the app is ready to go, if you wanted to test it out.
Well, if you say so.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? All right, we're going to move on. We have a report to be introduced by Community Services Director Donna Finch and a report given by Library Specialist Two, Martin Viegas.
Thank you, Chair Kinnerly. So I'm happy to introduce Mr. Viegas to discuss our Vets Connect program. As you may know, we do have a very active Vets Connect program at the library that connects our local veterans with resources in the community. Mr. Viegas is going to provide an overview of the program, introduce the team that helps administer the program, and then talk about some of the activities that we have going on and our upcoming goals for the program over the next year. So I will go ahead and introduce Mr. Viegas to provide the report.
Awesome, thank you everybody for having me today and allowing me to give this fairly quick update on what our program has been up to for the last year. I think it was last March, actually, that I last gave an update to you. So here is another one. So for those who may not be familiar, the Veterans Connect at the library, often shortened to just Vets Connect, we mainly host office hours at the library. So within the Community Resources Office in the library, we have volunteers that work to work with the community, veterans and their families mostly, to essentially provide support or referral or assistance with any kind of benefit application, housing, healthcare, jobs, really anything related to their veteran benefits specifically, or anything that's available as a local resource as well. Right now, our office hours are only on Wednesdays from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We are looking to expand very soon, so more on that shortly. Apart from the office hours that we host at the library, we also do outreach at city hosted events. So from time to time, you will see us at, out and about within the city. We host a booth at special events, and you'll see our volunteers or myself handing out information about our program and just usually giving out something to help veterans feel welcome within the community. Of course, we would not be able to do it without the team. And we did gain a couple of new members throughout this past year. Couple of them were a bit shy and didn't want to be pictured, but that's okay. Our main volunteer is David. So if you remember from last year, we had our lead volunteers, Ms. Ellie and Mr. Johnny Griffiths, who retired and moved to Arizona. Since then, the program has kind of been hanging on by a thread, and it is all basically because of David. And of course, Sally, we'll, we'll get to in a bit too as well. But David has really kind of taken the reins on the program, especially when it comes to leading and training some of the new volunteers. So I cannot thank him enough for the work that he continues to contribute to the program and to the community. So anything related to our office hours, anything related to kind of the local resources, keeping notes and following up with members that come to pay us a visit, David's going to be the guy to talk to there. He has extensive history working with veterans, being a veteran service officer himself, having served in the military. His wealth of knowledge that we tap into quite frequently in order to be able to basically continue the mission of supporting our veterans. Ms. Carol here, who is in the audience with me today, thank you Carol for being here. She is one of our new volunteers who has essentially been learning the ropes. And so right now, we have her introduced to the office hours aspect. So anything relating to local resources, potential benefits that veterans may ask for, a lot of forms. One of our big accomplishments over the past year was actually making a cheat sheet for the forms that veterans may either be required to present or may ask about. So at this point, I think all of our volunteers know all too well what a DD-214 is. But again, it's all about learning kind of the basics and then moving on from there in terms of learning kind of the deep network that we have here for supporting our veterans within the area, whether it's the Corona Vet Center or the VA over in Loma Linda, the housing over near the March Air Force Base. There's a lot of great resources available. And that's our primary goal, to just point the veterans toward those resources. And it's not necessarily work that we have to do ourselves. We have those resources out here, and they just may not know where to go. So, ah, how do I go back? There we go. So Sally is our other longtime member here, volunteer for the program. So she is our main book club lead and our host. The Veterans Connect Book Club, which we'll talk about in a couple of slides, they meet very regularly at the library. And that group of guys is very close, is one way to put it. They are on time every other week. They get on Sally when she is late or maybe can't make a meeting. They bring their own donuts, we provide the coffee. They read and talk about books that are related to either military service or something that they just might agree that they're all interested in. And boy, do they have a lot of topics that they're interested in. So we'll talk a bit more about that. And of course, Gail is one of our other newest members. Same as Carol, she's kind of just been learning the ropes, picking up knowledge about one resource at a time. And so hopefully, with this new kind of team that we've got going on, we'll be able to expand our office hours pretty soon once we finish what I, I guess I'll call basic training. Okay, so last year, despite having a pretty small team at the time, we were still able to finish it out strong. And so one of the main things that we hosted is our annual Resource Fair. So we were very fortunate to get a lot of local resources come out and just talk to veterans in the community. We didn't get a very large turnout, but the veterans that did show up really enjoyed the program. As usual, we also provide a hot meal, just in case the veterans may be interested in that as well. But we had the Assembly Member Cervantes's office stop by and host a booth. We had the Corona Vet Center, the Norco College Veterans Career Center as well. And of course, a program called Ride at Home that helps do kind of therapy for veterans within their house. And that is a local resource that reached out to us and was interested in working with us. Toward the end of the year, in November, we went to the annual Amber Waves of Grain program. And so there, you see me hosting, kind of working two booths at the, at a time. So on one side, we gave out information about the Veterans Connect at the library program. We gave out these therapeutic craft kits for veterans and their families, just for them to be able to kind of have fun. And, you know, if, if anyone's suffering from any kind of emotional distress, the craft kit is intended to take no more than about an hour or an hour and a half. And it's just something to be able to, for them to be able to focus on and work on if they're feeling any kind of emotional distress. On the other side there, so we worked with our senior project manager, Ms. Tracy Martin, here with the City of Corona. She has been taking lead on the Veterans Memorial Project update here at City Hall. And so we've been working closely to try and get the word out. We hosted surveys for that project back when it was in the survey phase. And so we continue to be in the conversation for this project because we are trying to be as involved as we can be moving forward. And so she and I hosted a booth there at the Amber Waves of Grain program. And of course, we're very thankful to have received a bit of the funding from that program as a donation to our service here, the Veterans Connect at the library service. So thank you again to the Amber Waves of Grain Committee. So if we talk about the work that we do at the Vets Connect office, I like to use the little tagline, connect, support, enrich. So for us right now, we are back at square one. So that starts with the connecting, oh, there goes that one. So when we start with connecting, it's really just about getting the word out. Because we've had a pretty small team, we haven't really been able to get out there as much to tell veterans and tell the community that we exist and that we're here to help. But again, things may change. I know that the, when Congress passed the, what was known as the PACT Act, the Promise to Address Comprehensive Toxins Act, that expanded what was eligible to apply for certain benefits. So specifically for Vietnam veterans, that meant a lot of injuries that may have come from Agent Orange. They were now included to be eligible for more benefits than they normally would have. And so we did have veterans and families come up to our office. So that kind of kept us busy a couple of years ago. Since then, it's been kind of slow. However, there is a bit of, I would say, uncertainty with veterans, specifically those working federal jobs right now. We have had a couple of conversations about kind of how to plan for that in case, you know, people need assistance with employment, people need to touch up their resumes, whatever it might be. We're kind of gearing up to be a little busy in the future. Again, especially now that we have the team, we can think about doing more than just office hours. So again, you see pictured there, one of the renderings for that new memorial project that is being planned here at City Hall. We're going to work to try and be a part of that as much as possible. And of course, we can't do that without our volunteers that work with us. Again, we also want to enrich the lives of the veterans in the community. So we are working to put together a kind of calendar throughout the year of quarterly events to help just bring veterans together, whether it's here at the library or anywhere in the city, maybe like a park or any other venue as well. So we're trying to, again, bring awareness to our program, support those that are aware of it. And then once we do that, we can come together and just find time to enjoy each other's company and know that they are supported and that we're here for them. So back to the book club. They have read quite a lineup of books over the past year. For those that may not be familiar, the Veterans Connect Book Club meets on the first and third Wednesday of each month, starting at 10:30 going all the way to 12:00 PM in the Grace Tabor Boardroom downstairs at the library. We provide the coffee for them, they bring their own donuts. And we have now six members, we got a new, very regular member, who come extremely consistently for the last, I would say, four and a half years that I've been a part of this program. And so some titles that you see that they've read over the past year include Jungleland, One Woman's Army, The Badass Librarians of Timbuktu, A Wing and a Prayer, Ian Fleming, and SOE's Operation Postmaster, which was the basis for the James Bond movies and the, the series there. And most recently, they are currently reading Imminent, which is a book about UFOs and one of the more recent Pentagon reports on that. So again, these are all books that they've agreed to kind of read together and discuss. And it ranges from a variety of topics to exploring finding lost treasure in the jungle, to UFOs, and to more historical fiction titles and even nonfiction titles as well. And of course, we could not do it without our team, we couldn't do it without support from the city, and most importantly, our community. We have been very fortunate to receive donations over the past year from the Amber Waves of Grain Committee, the Corona Elks Lodge, number 2045, and the Women's Improvement Club of Corona. So another big thank you to those groups for helping kind of fund our mission. Right now, the primary use of the funds that we receive is to help pay for the books that we provide for the book club. And we are, again, those social events that we're planning, it helps pay for the food, it helps pay for any kind of giveaway or support, whether it's like a toiletries bag that we can have for, you know, veterans facing homelessness. Winter coats is something that we've kind of messed around with and see if it's something that we can afford to provide, given the current amount of funding that we have. So right now, it's pretty much all entirely funded by those donations. Anything that comes, anything other than that, we usually try to cover with a bit of our outreach fund from the library. But if you have any other questions, I am here for you. So thank you for your time.
Okay, before I allow the trustees to speak, Ms. Beckus, are there any speaker cards from the public?
No speaker cards from the public.
Are there any written comments from the public?
No written comments from the public.
All right, I'll open it up to comments from the trustees.
I have a couple of questions. I know it's hard to replace Ellie and Carrie. But how many vets would you say you serve in the last year, or how many? Do you think?
Right now, so over the past year, I don't know the total number, but I would say it's probably about two to three per month that have been coming in to, to visit the library, whether it's a phone call, an email, or coming in person. The amount of veterans we serve might be low, but the assistance that we provide has been pretty high. Most recently, actually, we had, I guess, I won't name any names. But we had somebody who, their family member was experiencing, was at risk of experiencing homelessness, and they were having surgery for what may have been a service-related injury. And so there was a wealth of, you know, right away, we can connect you with city resources through CityNet. We can connect you to the Riverside County's Housing Authority. We can connect you to the VA over in Loma Linda, we can connect you to healthcare options. So we kind of gave them a lot of options there. But again, any one person that we help, they may have a lot of support that we can give them, so.
Yeah, that was my next question, what kind of services, I mean, what kind of options can you give them and what can they come there for?
So that's, that's a great question. Many veterans that we do see, just either in passing at the library or at events, they usually just want somebody to talk to, somebody who may understand the frustrations that they have with the process. VA claims are never something fun for anyone. And so, once you start kind of picking apart the knots and the strings and kind of picking the brain to see, okay, what kind of injury might they, or what kind of healthcare might they need? Is this going to be more of like a housing-specific question that they're, or issue that they're facing? Is this something where, you know, they're just having some sort of crisis, whether it's financial or mental health? Asking the right questions, whether it's in person, over the phone, or via email, that helps us kind of narrow down what resources to point them to. And again, here in Corona, we have a pretty wide variety where even just here in the city, we can immediately point them to, you know, that same day, go visit this office, call this number, this guy, this person, this woman, whoever, they'll be able to help you. But it, it can range from anything related to, again, finances, housing, medical care, loneliness, depression, PTSD. And we have different kind of trainings and kind of guidance for our volunteers on how to get through that and.
Thank you.
Mr. Viegas, Viegas, I was going to ask you, are there any help with transportation for them? Do you think perhaps that's why you don't get more people coming in?
So that is a great question. We are actually, so David and I have been in the process of compiling a survey. So we also want to know the answer to that question. Right now, what we have is essentially a form, kind of like an intake form for when veterans come and talk to us in person. What we're missing is kind of feedback from the community. And so we are working to put together a survey that we can put either outside of the Veterans Connect office or distribute into the community. But we do have, so I've been fortunate enough with working, in working with our local partners and going to these events, I've been fortunate enough to meet a couple of other services that offer transportation to veterans. So if it is something that they ask us for directly, we do have a company that we can refer them to that might be able to help them almost always at no cost or for very little cost.
That's great. And I was saying, as far as your, your outing that you had, maybe just word of mouth, you know, tell the, the veterans, tell other veterans that they know, you know, even if they can't come themselves, you know, just so you can get a better showing. Because I know they're out here, right? Comments from any of the trustees, trustee Leonard?
Martin, is there like an average age of the veterans that are seeking services? Whereas like, maybe it's, you know, 35 to 45 that tend to come in, the lower, the younger guys that have just come out, they, they don't tend to seek us out, and the older guys, they don't tend to seek us out. Like, is there things that, that are drawing just a certain age group in? Especially when you're talking about like DD-214s, you know, now you're really talking about people who are maybe trying to get their affairs in order, that sort. And by the way, I feel for Sally because I grew up with that moniker, if you're not 15 minutes early, you're late. So I, I totally get her poor thing, sorry.
Yes, so the, I would say, the, the general age of the veterans that come to us for help, that we have helped in the past, they do tend to be older veterans, I would say 40 and above. And that does kind of correlate with, you know, they get to the point where the, the pain in their back or maybe the, the loss of hearing in their ear, it went from something they could live with to something that's now a problem. And so often, we do work with them and trying to figure out, okay, when, when did you first start experiencing this? With, you know, is this really, we're trying to get to the bottom of, is this a service-related injury? And is this something that the VA can help kind of cover for you? So we kind of ask the questions to try and figure out, where did this start and how did it begin? And how long have you been feeling this? Whether it's for like a pain, you know, what's, what's the word? Any kind of uncertainty with like their mental health, their housing uncertainty that they might even face. We always try and find kind of the origin point and then go from there. But yeah, you're correct, a lot of the younger veterans that we've seen in the, our events and just doing general outreach in the community, you know, the military kind of hardens them and tells them that, you know, they got to push through it and kind of, I don't want to use the word ignore, but they tell them that, you know, you're tough, you can make it. And then the problem kind of grows to the point where they ask us for help. And that's where we help kind of, there's a lot of services that they can access when they need help. And we kind of help break it. and we kind of help break it down to a starting point for them. And so, yeah, I would say a lot of them do tend to be on the older side. And usually by then, they tend to have some pretty big issues that we can help with.
Well, thank you guys for helping, because I know with my husband, who's a Vietnam vet, when dealing with the VA, some, it's extremely hard to get a hold of them. It's extremely hard to get an appointment with them, and so they get frustrated. And, I mean, if it wasn't for me being on the phone with them and taking the time to work with them, it's extremely hard. So thank you guys for doing that for them.
Thank you. Any other comments, trustees? Well, thank you for your presentation. That really opened my eyes and probably a lot of ours. And I wish you success in the future. You know, getting those hours that you need, as well as getting some more man, bodies in there. Trustee Communications, do you all have any comments? Okay, well, thank you all for joining us at the Library Board of Trustees Meeting. We will adjourn this meeting at, I'm not sure what time it is. 6:39, and our next meeting will be on April 22nd, 2025, at 5:30 p.m. Thank you.